Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Hambach-Boyle and as President, I call to order the August 7th, 2017 Eau Claire Area School District School Board meeting tonight. I thank all those that are here today that serve the Eau Claire community as employees of the Eau Claire School District. There are many of you out in the audience, retired people. And thank you to those also that serve on the Board. You are elected and put in an amazing amount of time and we're eternally grateful. So, also, I want to thank those in attendance here and those participating online through the help of our amazing community partnership with Chippewa Valley Community Television. You can watch tonight's meeting on Channel 994 if you're ever interested. When you can't sleep at night, you might want to put that on. So, I would like all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Patty, are we in compliance with the open meetings law?
Yes, we are.
I saw that posted outside in the hallway as well. Can you roll call for a quorum, please?
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder? He's absent. Commissioner Luganville?
Here.
Commissioner Vu?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Bika?
Here.
And Commissioner Dux is also absent.
Thanks, Patty. We have Commissioners in a different state and someone who is across the pond, so they'll be back at our next meeting. Next comes our Public Forum, which we open to the public and we have no one signed up this evening, so I'm going to go straight on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Hartebeck?
Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming Board of Education events. Starting on August 14th, the Board will begin a series of listening sessions on the boundary changes. The first one will be held tomorrow night at 6:30 at Sherman Elementary School. That will be followed on August 14th at DeLong Middle School, also at 6:30. On August 21st at North, there will be another listening session. And, I'm sorry, that will be August 23rd. And then, I wanted to tell the Board that on August 21st, you're invited to the new teacher orientation, which will be held at North High School, and that begins at 8:00. And you are also invited on August 28th to the opening of Schools All Staff Meeting, which will begin at noon at Memorial Auditorium. So, our next Board meeting is August 21st at 7:00 PM. This week, we started our second session of summer school, and we have students enrolled at all levels. Some of the highlights are that we have partnership with the Children's Museum, and it's called Plant to Plate. We have two partnerships with UWEC. One is Bilingual Beginnings, which is Spanish and Chinese classes for grades 1 through 4, and the Priory Pioneers, which are a nature group, and that's also grades 1 through 4. Then we have a partnership with the Chippewa Valley Museum, and it's called All in a Day's Work, and that is for grades 1 through 6. We are cooperating with the Boy Scouts in their Camp Brunswick Adventure Day and the Beaver Creek Reserve activities. And also, we have a program going on with the Ellie Phillips Library about coding, and that is for grades 6 through 8. So, lots going on in the second session of summer school. That's all for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hartebeck. I have a pretty short President's Report as well. I just wanted, I, we've had some other districts pick up on our resolutions that we've used, so I've gotten out on the web and watched their meetings and watched a couple of ours. I've never taken the time to do that, but I noticed at times, the camera doesn't necessarily always on the person speaking, and I think as I watched other Board meetings, I didn't catch who was speaking. So, if at all possible, we go to the protocol where I will call, if your light's on, I will call and then say your name, and that way if camera's not right on you, people will know who's speaking. I think that's important, especially since we're now more on the Internet and on TV. Okay? I just wanted to bring that up. I've been on the Board for many years and have not had time to really do that, and I did, so that's good. Also, I sent out to you all your committee assignments. They will hold from what we discussed at the last meeting with Lori stepping in on Jennifer's Committee, so I sent that out to you today, so I won't belabor that point. There's also a doodle poll that was sent out for orientation. Joe, you got back about Thursdays, but if we went from 5 to 9, would that work with your schedule? So, we could use the same dates on the doodle poll, but just change it by an hour, because that conflicted with, and that poll was sent out on July 27th, so watch for it and then see if any of those three days work, because we really need to get that date nailed down. I wanted to say for new Board members, too, I really like this magazine, but you'll start? Have you started to get your school news? Yeah, we've been in there a couple of times, too, but I just wanted to make sure everybody got there. It's a good read when you have time. And then, as far as this week for me, I just wanted to let you know that I will be going with three community members for the Wisconsin Public Education Network Summit on Wednesday. I'm part of a round drop in roundtable with the head of Grumps, which is the grandparents' group that supports public schools. So, Nan and I are doing roundtable on going public beyond the budget, and we're going to be talking about, with other districts, about what you focus on for advocacy efforts when it's a non-budget time, okay? Also connecting the dots and building coalitions with other people within your community that support public education. And then, we're going to spend some time with districts talking about state challenges and local action challenges. What I'm going to do, though, that you need to be aware of, is to take our resolution work to the WPEN so that we can share that with other districts, especially the one we did on the voucher transparency bill to see if we can't get more than Holman lined up as a district with a Board that will support that resolution. So, I wanted you to be aware of that as well. And I want to highlight also the fact that we are members of WPEN. So, if there's anything else you want me to cover, you know, let me know tonight after the meeting, and I will take that with me as well. And that concludes my President's Report. Takes us then to our School Board Committee Reports. Are there any reports that anyone has at this time? Hearing none, we can go on to the Legislative Update. Commissioner Luganville?
Good evening. I have just a few things. One, I have no update on the state budget still. It's stalled due to the Foxconn negotiations happening. The other piece I wanted to mention was that resolutions for WASB are going to be due pretty soon already again. They're due on September 15th. So, we do have two Board meetings between that time. If you have resolution topics you would like discussed and voted on by the State School Boards Association, let me know, and we can put it on a future PNG agenda and then bring it for a vote, so, as an individually considered resolution. And then, I can bring that to the State Policy Committee. And finally, we have a new legislative advocacy website, where I'll put a lot of the more detailed information and links to get involved, so I don't have to give a huge report every meeting. So, you can go to ECASD.us/advocacy or click on Legislative Advocacy under the School Boards tab on the website. So, that's all I've got.
Thanks, Commissioner Luganville. And that concludes that section of our meeting, and that takes us to the Consent Resolution Agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 24th, 2017, the minutes of closed session, July 24th, 2017, and the Human Resources Employment Report.
I move approval.
Do I have a second? Got a motion from Commissioner Luganville. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Vu. Can we take a roll call vote on that, Patty, please?
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Thank you. We have no individually considered resolutions tonight, so we're going to join, oh, wait a minute, I do this every time. Superintendent Hartebeck has an announcement to make.
Okay.
I'm glad I caught it myself this time.
So, with your approval of the employment report tonight, you also approved the transfer of Laura Nicolet from the Assistant Principal at South Middle School to become the Assistant Principal at Memorial High School. So, Laura, would you stand up? Laura began her career in Eau Claire 23 years ago?
Twenty, it'll be 29.
29 years ago? Okay, so that would be like 1989?
Correct.
Okay. As a 6th grade teacher at Sherman School, throughout her career, Laura has taught at DeLong, North Star, and South Middle Schools. She served as an interim Assistant Principal at North Star. She was a teacher on special assignment at South Middle School and then later took over the role of Assistant Principal there. She has a Bachelor of Arts and a Master's Degree from UWEC, and she earned her administrative licensure at Viterbo. You know, Laura has a background, a long teaching background. She's licensed in social studies and in French, and we look forward to your leadership and your work at Memorial, and we know you're going to do a great job there, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Our committee reports, we were adjourned to our committee and items for discussion. Now, we have our committee reports, I see Jim going up to the podium. The audience has an opportunity between each report to ask questions, so I need to remember to do that this evening as well. So, the first thing on our list is the family climate survey?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. And Jim Schmidt will take over. Thanks, Jim.
All right. Thank you for inviting me back. Family climate survey, it's typically a survey that we run in April and May. This year, we actually ran it a little bit longer, because we tried to get an increased participation. We always seem to have that happen every year. We want to get more families involved, and so we actually left it open through July 4th. Because we did that, that actually delayed our presentation here, because we typically do this presentation in July. We postponed it. One reason is that, and also the other one is, if you remember, we did the student engagement survey at our last meeting, and so we try not to give you two surveys at once, so that we don't budge you with lots of data. This is a census survey, so it's sent out to all of our families. So, we pull all the data out of Skyward, and it's not, this isn't a sampling, so this is of those who respond. So, it's important to understand that we're, and most of our respondents do it electronically. So, we offer this survey both electronically and paper versions. We offer it in English, in Spanish, and in Mung. We did work with El Centro de Conexión de Chippewa Valley to try to increase our Spanish participation, Spanish-speaking participation. Anecdotally, we know that we have participants from multiple languages, but they don't always use the avenue of the Spanish or Mung version. And because we do not, it's a confidential, it's a confidential survey, we don't disaggregate to be able, so we can't actually pull the information, so we don't actually, each invitation is not tied to that person's, to the adult's background. We do do that with students, but we don't do that with our families, so, so we're not able to actually report that level of detail for the, for the Board tonight. Couple other things is that, you know, we just returned from a data conference last week of a group of, from our team, from Teaching and Learning, and I'll say that last time I presented to the Board about student engagement and saying not every district does this, I can confidently say that our district is probably in the minority in terms of doing the type of surveying that we do and reaching out for data in the non-academic achievement data, and so we should feel pretty good about that. The negative with that is that because not all districts do that, there's not a standardized set of measures that we compare to, to national benchmarking yet, so at some point, I know when we're here long enough, and when Laura and I are doubling our years in the district, we'll be able to have that conversation, but we're not there yet. So, the, this has alignment to the strategic plan in four of our five areas, and in terms of collaboration and collaborative cultures, it's important to recognize that that collaborative culture is our third priority area, is about staff-to-staff collaboration. And so, we do have the, obviously, a strong collaboration, and we're known for that in our district with our families, which is the fifth priority area. So, we do also want to say, like, we measure family climate for many reasons, but primarily, it's a good indicator about the climate in our district, and, and that has a benefit on the academic achievement of our students. And so, it's not exhaustive, as we said, it's a, and it also, it's limited because of its nature of not being, it's not a sampling survey, and yet, it does give us some indication. So, the story of this survey actually starts back in January at PAP, and so, we started there, because again, if we think back, oh, yes?
Because we have new Board members.
Oh, yes.
Make your advisory council. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought I had sort of, thank you. Good call. On the Parent Advisory Council that meets each month, first, I think it's the first Tuesday of the month, we went through last year's survey with the families that were there, the family representatives that were there, and they did a lot of, there was a lot of wonderments as to the data that was there, and they really started to work on categorizing the data from last year into four areas for this coming year that we would add into the survey. And the first was around accountability. And so, for accountability, it's really, many of our families wondered if their experiences were consistent with other families, and we, and it would, appears from a lot of our discussions that there was, especially for families who have children at multiple levels. When child one goes through, say Memorial or North High School, and then when child two comes through, and we, of course, we are an evolving district and trying to continuously improve our program, that experience changes. And so, really, there's a lot of wonderment about, as that experience changed, if, if our staff were being held accountable, and so, that was one of the questions that they wanted to dig in deeper. It wasn't that they were saying that our staff are not accountable, it was just a wonderment. Also wondering if the curriculum is common across the district. So, in other words, is a 3rd grade teacher at Roosevelt teaching the same thing as a 3rd grade teacher at Meadowview, as Locust Lane, et cetera? And finally, there was a recognition that accountability increases as we are connected more with our schools. So, as families are more connected with their teachers, they felt that there was a level of accountability that, that rose, and so, that drove a lot of that discussion. They really wanted questions to reflect that type of conversation, and we'll go through that in a little bit. The second area was communication. And in communication, there was that interest, there was a lot of discussion about uniformity regarding discipline and what's expected of our students in terms of their behavior, and also wanting to know about, and you'll probably find interest in this, how resources are allocated throughout the budget process. Remember, we just went through a referendum, so clearly, if you remember, this was about a, just over, or about two months after the referendum, so that was probably clearly on people's mind. And then, also, just having consistency for schools, for communication for schools. The communications that schools use are consistent throughout the district. The next area that that group dove into was rigor, and really wanting students to excel in certain areas, like sometimes they excel in one area, but maybe not others, and recognizing both that students have different strengths, but that they learn differently. And also, and this was an interesting comment that came out, are we failing at teaching the basics by trying to be creative teachers? And so, that was just an interesting comment that came out of there, that, that recognition of creativity and uniformity, and so, we thought we'd dig into rigor in, in terms of the survey. And then, again, that need for consistency. And finally, clearly, the Board's message about the whole child has been heard by many stakeholders, including the Parent Advisory Council, and providing more support for children and ensuring safety for all children, and that idea of customizing instruction to meet the strengths and needs of each student through multiple strategies from the teacher. So, as a result, the scope of our climate survey changed, and you'll see, these are topics, many of these topics we've had before, but we've added topics, and we've really tried to lump them into the priority areas for the strategic plan. And so, there's actually two slides here, and these are the ones that fell with, and we're going to go over each of these. We're not going to go over every question under every area, we're going to give you a broad picture of how we scored in each of those areas. And then, in addition, we also had under the high-quality staff piece, that school leadership and accountability, and then, the ones associated with partnerships and So, going back, if you remember at the beginning, I talked about the Parent Advisory Council themes. We do two things when we, when we send out questions for the family survey. One is we have the Likert Scale. We ask a question, and then we go from strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, and don't know. By the don't know, remember that one, because that's going to come up right toward the end. We also ask a few open-ended questions about what they like the Superintendent to do about their school, what they would like, how they would like their school to improve, to earn an A or B. We asked this question about, would you give your school an A or B, yes or no? And then, or what grade would you actually give it? And so, we ask these open-ended questions, and we come up with some themes, and you can see the four areas of the themes that K-12 insight, we don't see the individual data, it's always good to remind all of us that when we get these verbatim responses, the district does not see them, the vendor goes through that and does the theme analysis. We don't, again, to protect, because sometimes those, those responses can sort of cue someone into who that might be that's responding, so we try to avoid that and have the vendor take care of giving us the, the theme analysis. So, you can see the accountability piece of strength, and again, this is what we're known for, right? We have, we connect with our students, the communications, I've talked a lot about those positive interactions. You're going to see the rigor, you're going to see, and I talked about this before when I presented about surveying, you're going to see people saying, "We love your rigor," and you're going to see people saying, "Please increase your rigor." So, we shouldn't, that's, that's not unusual for us to see that. Just warn you ahead of time, but, so we saw a lot in there, and the responses about appreciating the rigor or the quality of education they receive, and then those positive experiences in terms of the whole child. For areas of growth, you can see the, the desire for highly qualified teachers who are held to high standards by their principals, that communication, not that, not to improve it, but to increase it. They want to hear from us more. And then, the whole child, that need for reduced class size to have that individual connection. I think that third bullet we saw through the referendum. And then, finally, with rigor, that desire for more challenging coursework. So, we really appreciate the rigor, and we want more of it, so. Sometimes you'll see those things that seem to contradict one with each other, but that's not unusual for us to see that. So, Dr. Hartebeck had a different slide that had a very similar set of data when she presented to the chamber, and also with her goals, and, so our overall perception, so this is the percent of, of our respondents that give the district a grade of an A or B. And so, you can see that we have 83% of our, in our family climate survey, gave that A or B. And when we compare ourselves to, the community one was the Springsteen, if you remember the Springsteen pre-referendum survey, that was 80%. That is, and again, the difference between the first two, one is just our families, the other is our community chosen at random. So, I mean, those are pretty darn close. And then, of course, the national rating from the Gallup survey about, and most families will score their school the highest, across the country, not just here, across the country, they'll score their school the highest, they'll score their district lower, and they'll score other schools lower. Here, we score, we see them scoring our district and our school very similarly. There's not a lot of differentiation from our families between, between the two, and so, but these are very high scores, so 83%. And one more thing is, as you look at the numbers, and the district benchmark is usually for our, our scores to be at about that 80% or higher level. So, underneath the academic achievement area under the strategic plan priority 1, I said that there are these categories of, and this was our average, there's always a danger in averaging, this was the average score, or average of our, of the respondents scoring strongly agree, strongly agree or agree to the questions. So, we'll give you some samples of what this, so for academic preparation, our strongest area in this one was things like, "I make sure my child does his or homework every night." So, that scored the highest under academic preparation. On the other hand, the challenge, our lower score on that was, "Teachers give me useful information about how to help my child do well in school, and they give me timely information on feedback, and feedback on tests and quizzes." So, on questions like that in terms of academic preparation, again, still, we're scoring very high as a district, but we also know internally that we've got some things that we're going to work on with our buildings in terms of specific areas in that particular example, increasing the rate and specificity of feedback to our students. In rigorous and challenging programs, you can see the 80%, the strongest area in that is, and an example of a question is, "My child's school offers a challenging curriculum." And then, the lower score is, "My child's school encourages students to attempt lessons beyond their comfort level." So, those type of questions, on average, we had about 80%. And then, finally, under educational programs and services, our strongest program in this case was art and music, closely followed by FIDE, something very interesting. So, there's a whole list of different programs that we offer, and the number one scored from our families was art and music programming. The one that scored, the lower one, on the lower end of this, was actually our guidance programming, and we have a plan in place for that this year with our academic planning work.
Jim, can I?
Yeah, absolutely.
Board, if you have questions, as Jim goes through this, you know, turn your light on, and I will call on you if you have any, just so we know that's kind of how we do it. Okay?
So, area two, this is our student social-emotional growth. There's five areas, and one might wonder, like, why is bus transportation there? Remember, we had this whole piece about safety, right, student safety, so, you can see the areas, and so, we scored a little bit lower, especially in that second bar, the, the first bar is just below our, our target area. Some examples of a strong one is student support. There's a teacher, counselor, or staff member at school to whom my child can go to for help. The lower one is, in that, under student support, is the athletic programs offered in this school. Our, that, that those are something that my child would like to participate in. Now, we've got to remember, this is a pre-K-12 survey, so we're asking this question to elementary, so it's not unusual to see that one score a little bit lower. Safety and behavior, "My child is safe at school" was our highest scoring one, and then the lower one is, there's perception, the perception that there's still bullying going on. So, this is, again, some bullying issues at schools, so we're going to have to dig deeper, we can disaggregate later and look at if there's some hotspots in particular schools. School operations, a strong one is, "My child's school is clean," and they have access to technology for learning. And a challenge, thinking about our policy and governance discussion this morning, "Fresh, high-quality food is served at my child's school." It's usually one of the ones that's, that always scores low, no matter what the district is. Bus transportation, there were no challenges in this area. "My child's, my child's school buses on time most days, and overall, I'm satisfied with student transit." So, this kind of reminds me of another survey that we run for, you know, like Buildings and Grounds, always scores high. In this case, bus transportation, I mean, student transit really scored well for our families, on average, 93%. And again, it's important to recognize of those who responded. Educating the whole child, a strong area in that one is, "My child's school provides a safe physical environment." And also, one that was very close is that they're engaged in learning at school. And a challenge is, and related to something earlier, "Class size interferes with students getting individualized attention." But again, those are all scoring pretty, those are pretty robust numbers across the Board. So, our high-quality staff one scores a little bit lower than the benchmark, and there's only two that fit in this area, and this is, it was interesting, when we looked at the, at the design of the survey, some of these are kind of difficult for, probably for some people to respond to. So, for example, in the school leadership, the strength area was, "The principal makes decisions that are in the best interest of students." A challenge would be, "The principal resolves conflicts that arise between, between families and school staff members in a professional and timely manner." Sometimes that one scores lower, because, not that they didn't resolve it, but they may not have resolved it the way we, they would have maybe wanted to. So, we have to look at some of the design of that question to get to that specificity and maybe separate those out, so some of the question design there may have a little bit of an impact. On accountability, one of the strengths is, "Teachers at my child's school take responsibility for student learning." And a challenge would be, "Families indicate that they don't always know if or how performance issues are addressed or resolved," which sometimes makes sense, because we can't always tell them how that happens, because some of those are HR issues, so. So, sometimes those score lower just because of the, the design of that. Looking at strategic area number five, partnerships with families and communities. So, the last one, don't panic when you see the 29, okay? We'll get to the 29 in just a minute. That's not a, suddenly, we didn't just fall off the cliff. The 81 is that communication with the principal. "Principal was courteous, listened to my concerns," that was a really strong area. "The principal responded to my concerns in a professional manner." And again, a challenge would be, "The principal resolved my concerns," kind of related to that other one where
that other one where they may have resolved it, but maybe not the way that we had wanted. And then, family engagement, a strong area for us was, "I feel welcome in my child's school." And a challenging area for us is, "I understand the process for requesting to use facilities at my child's school." So, we've seen this one in past years, that requesting of, of use of facilities doesn't score real well for us overall. So, that's been one that's been consistently low. The last one, equitable funding. The question is really whether we feel that funds are equitably distributed across the district. So, you might see the 29 and think, "Holy cow." But 52% didn't know, okay? So, 52% don't know. And that number typically over the last three years prior to this year was 58, 52, and 44. So, it tends to be a very high number for us, where they really don't know how the funds are distributed. So, it's not uncommon. It fluctuates, and the number got better this year than in prior years, but it's, and that, that is consistent with what we heard also with PAC. So, that number is just simply, and that's a challenge, it's always going to be in front of the board, and the district is trying to help people understand how funding works, because it's a complex. This is always kind of exciting one, because it shows the, how often people want to, or how often they have participated or plan to participate in volunteer activities. And you can see, we have a lot of volunteerism. These are consistent numbers, what we've seen before. They inch up a little bit each year. And also, we also know that one of the strong areas with our families in terms of participation, our field trips and teacher appreciation events are very common events for our families to, for their volunteering activities. And finally, on the communication end, the first set of data, how our families currently say they're getting, they can vote for more than one, like, how do you get your information? And sometimes, it's interesting, I always kind of chuckled. This is the child one where it's like, you know, like if we pin the message to their sleeve and hope it gets home. That still scores really high. They don't want it to be that high, but a lot of these other ones, you can see, there's some discrepancy here, but you'll see, some of these numbers are, are more in line, but you can see, there's some differences like here of how they would like to get their information. So, Communications Committee will look at this. It's interesting, we've been trying to, you know, increase the Facebook and Twitter, but our, even though we have a population that's there, of those who responded, that's not our biggest area, there's still email. But again, of those who responded, of course, those who responded did respond to an email invitation to take the survey, right? So, there's a little bit of a challenge there. So, we will share this, these data when we, as a matter of fact, this begins next week with our principals, and then with a share with their leadership teams, and then really begin to work on the strategic plan, and reviewing strategic plans, and helping buildings really focus on, not just the student engagement, but the family climate as well. And then, really continue to develop and implement those culturally responsive practices to meet the individual needs of students, because we keep hearing that from our families, that idea of connectedness, that idea of smallness, if you will, of, "I want my child to be connected to my teacher as much as possible." All right, questions that you might have?
Anyone have questions? Commissioner Beekah?
Yeah.
What was the overall response rate, and how did that differ from past?
You know what, I'm glad that you brought that up. When I was going at the beginning, our response rate was 22%, and that is very similar to what we've had in the past. We've tried some different avenues to bump that up, and it, I think, when we first started doing the survey, it hung around 18, 19%, and that's when we first started keeping open longer. But typically, we're at about 22%, and that's what it was this past year.
Commissioner Torres?
Jim, thank you for the report. I have two questions. The first one, in relation to number one, priority one. Academic preparation and rigorous and challenging programs. Based on the responses that represent a challenge for the next academic year, what kind of initiatives are being developed in the professional development for teachers in the district?
Yep. It's interesting, we just had a meeting about this today, so we talked earlier, back in June, you had about the literacy project with, and that idea that embedding the culturally responsive practices intentionally into that work with our staff, and really making sure that we spend a great deal of time to support our staff in that transition, so that they're both asking for that rigor, but at the same time, so for example, if we're doing writing assignments, making sure those writing assignments connect with the students in the classroom, and that there's choice for students, so that they have a challenging task, but they also see themselves in the task, and making sure that our staff have the skills to support students in that manner. That's been our, I mean, in terms of the academic part, that's been our greatest effort right now, is, is the work that you took, that you learned about back in June, and making sure that that plays out successfully, especially as we begin the fall.
Thank you. Are those initiatives somehow tied to the student learning objectives for this year?
Yeah. So, that entire, so the, yes. That, that work begins, actually goes even back further to the prioritization of standards that we want students to learn, and then the learning targets that we want to meet those standards. And then, again, what are the practices and strategies that we do to support all students? And again, that, that comment that we, that we saw earlier about customizing instruction for my child, and making sure that, again, that each child can see themselves in the work that they're doing is part of, is a big part of this work.
Thank you. And our question has to do with the perception of the public in terms of inequity, how the budget is distributed. The one that showed 29, 29% as average, you said that 52% of respondents said that they didn't know.
Correct.
So, that's more than, more than half. And yet, from the other 48, 29% is the average. So, still, there's still a perception of this inequity going on. Is there any initiative or concrete ideas to how the community and the parents are going to be educated about how budget is distributed?
Superintendent Hardbeck?
So, I think one of the things that we tried to do in the referendum was to show the individual kind of facility needs of each school, and to educate the public to those needs. And so, as we're going about the referendum work, one of our strategies is to report back to parent groups and to community groups about where we are in the spending, and where we are in the progress of those building projects, and how those building projects will take place over the next three years. So, that's one strategy. In our parent handbook that we send out to all parents, we give a breakdown of the district budget, and how that district budget is spent. And then, I think, as we work with our Communication Committee this year, we're going to have to really focus on, how do we get the information out about how individual schools build their budgets? Because we start from the premise of zero, and each year, every school builds a new budget, and working with, with Abby Johnson. And so, I think it's probably a matter of making sure that, one, that our PAC, Parent Advisory Council, has a good understanding of that process, because they report back to their parent groups, but also thinking of ways that we can keep the public informed through our budget process as we go up through September, October, and November. And right now, it's a little bit of a challenge, because we don't have a state budget. So, we're a little bit behind the curve on that at this moment.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olegel?
Yeah, I'm just curious if any of the feedback that you received through this is going to cause you to tweak any of the action planning under the strategic plan? Are you pretty much still on the same track?
No, I think, actually, I think the strategic plan really provides that, and I think it's more about, do our strategies better support the strategic plan, rather than seeing it as the strategic plan? Ultimately, at this point, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say to, I'm not advising you at all to revise it, because I think it's more about how can, because we're just learning right now as a district how to work with the strategic plan. You think about, it's about 18 months old for us, and, and it's, what's really powerful is the ability to continue to point back to that document, looking at data, point back to that document, say, "How can we be more in this direction?" And as you look at the way we're starting to frame even this presentation, the conversations with the Parent Advisory Council, our conversations are changing too. And so, I'm more excited just about having that framework for future discussions than I am about wanting to see the framework change.
Commissioner Beekah?
I think I didn't fully understand what you were saying about disaggregating data and confidentiality.
Right, so, we, we tell families when it's, when the invitation is sent, they are guaranteed that it's a confidential process. And so, we, when we send out the student survey, we, there is, we send out a file of all the students and their IDs and all their demographic information. We don't get individual student data back, but K-12 insight that can use that data to really look at, how do our students of color do in each particular area? How do our special educations, et cetera, you know, like, how are they responding? We don't do that same process for families. We don't send and say, this email, we just send a list of the email addresses that we have on, on file, and then we let our families know that there's a paper version available. We don't, what we do not do is, we don't pull an email address and then say, "This email address represents a student with this particular background and these characteristics." And part of that is that the students are not guaranteed confidentiality, even though we don't really go back and look at individual students, but we do promise the families that, and so, we don't disaggregate. And that's one part of the reason why we don't have the ability to disaggregate. We can't tie back their responses to a, to the background of their students.
Okay, so, there are no demographic questions about families on the family?
Not currently, no.
I guess, would you consider possibly including, I, I don't know, I, disaggregating data is, it might be something you'd want to consider on important demographics of the families. I'm even curious if the response, people who responded are representative of the district.
Correct, correct. It is something we talked about. I think we'd have to, and your feedback on that will be informing for us for the future. It's not been something that's been our past practice. And as we worked with the vendor, typically, their recommendation has been that they tend to get more frank and feedback and a higher rate of return if that's not there. But that's something that we can continue to revisit with them.
Are you done, Commissioner Beekah? Yes. Superintendent Hardbeck?
So, I, I just wanted to respond in, in one way, and that is that there's, there has always been a concern in terms of surveying, that someone will know what I said in my comments. So, we have K-12 take care of all of that. I would say, though, that when we did the sampling survey with the community, the results were very much like what we see from the census survey with our families, in terms of the number of families who give the, a district a grade of A or B. And even some of the concerns that popped out from the community were very similar to the census survey. So, it's probably not a perfect process, but in terms of being representative, that survey we did for the referendum, which was a sample and representative of the district, was very, very close to what we're seeing in this survey.
I have a couple of questions. Will the board, I'm going to start with my last one first, I don't know why, it just seems like a fun thing to do. Will the board be provided with the narratives that the families provided?
We, we don't, no. And part of that, and it's, because we don't even see them administratively, and part of that is that, is that idea that they can feel free to respond without any concern that anyone is watching their individual comments locally.
So, do we get a, do we get some categories?
Yeah, we, that was, that's this piece right here.
Okay.
That's what we get, is that type of?
All right, that's the themes, okay. I was interested in the conversation that we had as a board tonight about, and what you brought up, brought up is the conversation between creativity versus rigor. I mean, I think that's a great conversation for our district to have anyway, especially since we have, we have policy that goes with innovation, and DPI now is, is kind of laying that out as their new format for districts to participate in. And the word that we were talking about as far as the whole child and the pieces about customizing is really connected to engagement and the relevance for kids when they identify what they're immersed in. I mean, great conversation. I mean, as a board, that's been part of our goals and part of our conversations from the beginning of putting together the strategic plan. So, bravo on that one. And the fact that the parents are pulling that out as a, as an area, and what that means has taken a tremendous amount of work, and we're seeing some of that work come to fruition. I really, as a board member, would like to see tying us now, the rigor, the relevance, the creativity, and the engagement, and what does that look like together?
And we, and if, you're talking about some other work, but even the surveying of where the survey goes next time, we're going to do something very similar with PAC, with Parent Advisory Council again, just to continue to refine those kinds, that, the data that we collect to inform us for the future.
And then, the other comment I wanted to make is about funding. I take a board and hit myself in the head about how complicated it is, how we went out to referendum and spoke and got it passed with over 65% of the vote about funding, and how complicated it was on a statewide basis, and where Eau Claire sat within, within that information. It just, to me, just says, we just have more work to do. And it's that complicated, and to have that many more conversations to keep, keep it up so people understand it. And the last thing I just wanted to talk about was the culturally responsive piece, and that that overlay now has become a broad brush, which I think is really, is good. So, I thank you for this work, and I hope that we can get the response rate up and, you know, as well. So, I noticed too, Commissioner Vu, if you have your laydown?
I noticed that there are some alignment of these family climate survey to the strategic plan. But I also remember, we, we did the climate survey before the plan was implemented. So, my question is, how intentional are we at, let's say, two or three years down the road, we want to look at the outcome of the strategic plan? How intentional are we at using this information, family climate, to help answer the outcome of the district plan?
So, the survey is only as good as if you use the data, correct? And so, I know internally, from, when I talk with, when we talk with, as an executive team, as we look at the strategic plans of individual buildings, we have to actually make sure that we use the data to, to inform the next steps for each, so each building uses that, their individual building data to inform their next steps. From a board level, one of the things that we will be, you know, like, like I said, we will go back to Parent Advisory Council, and we will look at the survey. And when we did the first round of this, looking at those four major themes, we are inching closer to having those conversations be like what we're doing today around the strategic priority areas. And so, when I, even when we did this categorization, you can see that there were, you have three in the first area, you've got five in the second, two, and then three. And then, some of our questions now are going to be, as we look at the survey of the future, is, does this help inform our work at the, at your level, or do we need to do some improvement to the, to the tool as well? So, taking the data currently and working with individual buildings is, is an immediate step. Looking at this and asking ourselves, can we do, can we do better with the survey to meet the needs as a district, and looking at, will be part of our conversation over the course of the next year, because these conversations, this survey is, is, and just like the student engagement survey, these are conversations we have with different groups throughout the year. And so, I would anticipate, we're going to see these two slides, oops, this slide and this slide should look a little bit different next year to better reflect the strategic plan. Again, we're just beginning to learn how to use the strategic plan. It's exciting, so it's not just this thing that we've written and sits here. And so, it's, it's shaping the future conversations we had. And at the time when we had to start working on this revision, we're just a little bit, we're just getting better at it. You bet.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we can head on to the audience. Oh, is there anyone, any questions from the audience? Thank you, Patty. Anybody from the audience have any comments? Seeing none, we'll go on to the 8.3 summary of written reports to the school board relating to learning, mental health, nursing, PBIS, and seclusion and restraint. All board members receive these reports ahead of time as part of their packets, okay? I think that's you too, Jim, right?
It is.
You are.
I was just working with Patty to make sure I got to the right spot. I was just working with Patty to make sure I got to the right spot. I came up the first time you had it all set up, it was so nice. All right. So, I'm gonna do the first part of this and then the Q and A part. I'm gonna be joined by Heidi White and Dr. Kai Ang Zhang in terms of, any questions you might have on specificity of the report? So, you just received a lot of written reports, right? A lot of data. I noticed that one of them had some numbers cut off, which we can try to work on getting you a cleaner version of that. It was a spreadsheet that just got chopped up, it was. And so, first of all, the, this one is really focusing on strategic priority, priority area number two. Really looking at supporting the whole child and that, again, the safety measures that we provide for students, both, both physical and, and emotional safety measures. The early learning piece of this, I'm not gonna give you a separate report on, overview on the early learning, because I would feel the, compelled to do the same for, then the rest of the K-12 program, but you're gonna hear some of those early learning pieces come in. And then after you having read it and me giving you a bit of an overview, if you have specific questions on any of these five different reports, please don't hesitate to, to ask when we get to that point at the end. Again, this is really, we're focusing on that second, the second element of the strategic plan. And really, we're gonna start first with nursing. And one of the things that you look, if you look at the trends, and these are, again, I'm gonna give you about eight more slides, I'm not gonna give you a lot of slides, but there's, there's a lot of data in there. But we know that most of those services, you'll see an increased need with the same number of staff that we've had before. We've also seen that Medicaid billing has returned to 2012, 13 levels. And the Medicaid billing, just so you understand how that works, that's a blind billing process. So, when we have, we submit increments of time, so when like an occupational therapist maybe is working with a, it has to be someone working with a student with an individual education, individualized education plan, an IEP. So, if they're working with a student, perhaps maybe working on their motor skills on writing, right? And they spend a certain amount of time, they can submit that for billing. We don't know if we're gonna get reimbursed for that until on the Medicaid end, they look to see whether or not the student is free and reduced lunch. And if they are, then we will get a Medicaid reimbursement. So, we submit billing, but we don't always get money back. And so, you'll also see here that our more common procedures, really our, you'll see blood sugar and insulin, so that's really associated with that diabetic part of the spectrum. And then our more complex procedures that you'll see in that list is anything with a G2, feeding, hydration, medication, and venting.
Could I ask a question about?
Yeah.
Commissioner Luganville?
With the Medicaid piece?
Yeah.
I don't see anything in here about the Medicaid billing, 2012, 13 levels?
Yep, right at the...
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, there was a, it's medical procedure, that's, I should.
Oh, okay.
Do you see it down there at the bottom?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, you'll see in 12, 13, we, you'll see the number of units billed was in that 6,000 area. And then we went up to, in the mid 9,000s and then back, now we're back down to that 6,000 area. And then a little bit lower even for this year. So, we're, we had a spike of a couple of years. And both Dr. Zhang and myself, we, we don't actually know the reason behind that, because we've had a transition in leadership, but we could dig into that if you're interested as to why it's changed.
No, I was just interested, and that's an interesting landscape right now with potential phase downs of Medicaid services and that funding, so.
So, there's another report on seclusion and physical restraint. You'll see the definitions there, seclusion is that involuntary confinement of a student. And it doesn't, in a room or area. So, we can seclude a student multiple ways and it's considered a, on the continuum of restraint. And physical restraint is that restriction that immobilizes that activity of a student. And one of the, we have to document each incident. There really isn't evidence that this type of, that applying seclusion restraint meets a desired, educational desired outcome. And so one of the things the district has done is a couple of pieces. One is using PBIS as that framework, using data-driven decision-making and, and strategies, but also using nonviolent crisis intervention when you do, when you do get to the point of having to apply physical restraint, and I should correct myself a little bit, nonviolent crisis intervention has multiple phases to it, all of which are de-escalation phases until you get to the point where those have not been successful. And then we finally do have to be involved in some sort of physical restraint. So, the district in the, in the past had a very small number of people trained, and what we did over the past couple of years is, through the work of Dr. Zhang, is increase our number of trainers to 23. And what that's done is, is put a trainer at all of our sites. And we have a couple of sites that we need to replace trainers, but now we have site, now they can be a resource in their building and do both initial certifications, recertifications, and more importantly, and I would argue most importantly, work with the building on continuing to stress those de-escalation strategies to avoid those situations in the first place. And so, that training is, is done through the Crisis Prevention Institute and we have, like I said, we, we significantly more people that are able to lead that training. In addition, you'll see that there are some, and toward the bottom of a couple of different pages, you'll see some data, a five-year rate for seclusions and an eight years of data for restraints. And the peak, we're at about a quarter where we were at the peak of the seclusions and about a half of where we were at the highest point for physical restraints. And so, that's good. We see some fluctuations in those numbers. And those numbers, there's a couple of different issues that we continue to work on, is making sure that we report everything. So, sometimes your numbers could be low because they might not be reported. So, we've also been stressing with our principals to ensure that, that reporting is taking place. Sometimes people, I think, think there's a stigma that if we do have to report it, but if it happens, we need to, we need to know that it happens.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yeah.
I just have, it's not in this report and isn't included here, but I'm, I don't know where it necessarily sits. Stuff with the Eau Claire Academy?
Yeah.
I'd be interested to know, once the school year is well underway, how many of our current students are at the Eau Claire Academy? And which schools those referrals are coming from? And whether they're going to school there or living there as well? But I think that'd be good information for the board. And I don't know which report that would end up in, but I'd appreciate that at some point.
I'm, I'm thinking that, Jim, if you go through these reports and through your PowerPoint, then I'll go back with each report and see if we have questions on each one, instead of just asking it randomly?
Sure.
Would that be okay to do it that way? And that way, we can address one and then another and be on the same topic, okay? Thanks.
School-based mental health, well, this is, there's a topic in our, in our educational community that's about as active of a topic in terms of communication in school-based mental health. As a matter of fact, I remember when, it was like about a year and a half ago, when Representative Rodriguez, they came up for the urban task force, and boy, we heard a lot of that in the urban task force about school-based mental health. And the landscape has changed in this area as well, but we said that we do have providers in each building and our greatest barrier to that service still is insurance. And so, just to give you a little perspective, the statistics nationwide from the mental health organizations say typically the need for mental health services, not just students, but just for citizens, is about 20%, so one in five. And we are able to service right now 2.4%. So, clearly, we, the need and the, and what we're able to get there, they're, they're very different. And again, there's, there's lots of, you know, there are issues with having enough providers. Because typically, when a provider comes to provide a service, if they travel to us, you know, we have to try to match schedules, we're trying to match that, that provider schedule with a student's academic schedule to mitigate the amount of class time that they might miss. They, they do this, this is not a big moneymaker for them, if you will. So, and so, because, because they lose some of that time, we try to maximize their time with us. So, if they come out to school A, we try to make sure they can do as many appointments as they can, just because if they come out for one and then they go to another school for another, that's not a really efficient model for them. So, there's a little bit of balance there. And our current filter is really to try to make sure those providers, first of all, take Medicaid. Back to Commissioner Luganville's comment earlier, right? We want to make sure they, the Medicaid, so that, that increases the number of students that are gonna be eligible to get through that insurance barrier. And then in addition to Medicaid, we're looking for providers that can offer, that accept a large number of insurances as well, in addition to Medicaid. And so, the appointments, like I said, are scheduled to, to really mitigate that absence of, of class time. Typically, up until this year, the district has not been allowed to get involved in the payment of school-based mental health services. That, that legislation has changed. Typically, in the past, the only thing the school district would be able to do monetarily is try to write a grant to do that. We have not built that into, it's, it's, we just didn't have enough time to build something like that into budget. There's a lot of conversations that have to take place around that. So, that's just something that has changed in terms of landscape across the state, is that ability for districts now to actually be involved on the fiscal end. Of course, if you do that, then resources, obviously, remember the pie is only so big. So, it's just something to keep in mind with school-based mental health in terms of, some of those opportunities have changed for our students. And again, there's, the need here is, is significant. So, Commissioner, or President Hamakbo, do you want me, are you okay if I just go on to the next one and then we come, and then we round through?
The reason I did, I went through them all, I have questions in each one, but...
Absolutely.
So, just, yeah, and then we'll come back and I'll start with each one and we can ask our questions, okay?
Okay. And then the last report you had is, if there's as close to a silver bullet as we have, PBIS or Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports, is that, it is not a program. It is a framework. It is an evidence-based framework, so it provides a lot of flexibility for us. We can bring in different behavioral programs to support students within that, within our PBIS. But it really does work on that evidence-based approach about establishing a, a whole school culture. It really focuses on making sure that we have systems in place to collect data to really, really identify where the sources of our issues are, rather than just simply reacting to an issue happening in one spot than an issue happening in another place. And we're looking for patterns of, of how those things play out in the building and also looking at our cultural responsiveness. We have support for PBIS at the regional level. The Wisconsin RTI Network does an outstanding job of supporting all schools in the region and across the state. We have 1.5 FTE dedicated for PBIS coordinators in the district. Every building has an internal PBIS coach at every tier, so there are three tiers. Tier one, T-I-E-R, not, you know. Tier one is that universal program. Tier two is that, and tier three is that increasing level of intervention. And so, if a building is at any particular, has a tier, everyone has tier one in place, most have tier two, and just one has tier three, there's a coach at each level. So, we have that, and then our PBIS district coaches support those coaches, so it's really working to, to support the building, building leaders. And then we have some SWISS facilitators, and SWISS is really that school-wide information system about the, managing the data and really using the data to try to make informed decisions. So, part of the PBIS is really that response intervention framework and really wanting to teach behaviors in a positive manner and reinforce those behaviors. And typically, when you do that, about 80% of our students respond to that. And then if that doesn't work for the other 20%, 15% tend to respond to a second level, so you'll see, you'll see tier two, you'll see check-in and check-out, that's that second level, and that typically works for about 15 of those 20%. And then 5% of the students really require that really intensive intervention more thing, and that's described in that report as well. So, we do have some benchmarks or some tools to measure how students are implementing, and you'll see the TIF or the TFI, sorry, the Tier Fidelity Inventory. And that benchmark is really set at 70%, so you'll see some scoring in there of how buildings are doing and how, on average, we were over 70%. We've got a couple of buildings that, that we would like to see get above that. One building didn't get in there and it wasn't because they didn't do it, they just didn't get in there, they dated in before it closed. So, that's a whoops, but they did actually go through that process. And then you'll see at the early learning, the early learning, childhood benchmarks of quality, that we're just starting to get into, 13 of our 21 sites, including Prairie Ridge, got involved in that. And that's a new, that we're, we're growing in that area as well. I show this slide and you'll see this in your, in your packet as well. Remember I said about, the, the target here is, an ODR is an office discipline referral, it's, it's a more significant event where a student, it's a documentation, and you'll see the level of documentation that we're having. McKinley's numbers, they're brand new to this, so this one I, and is referred to when Jody Hubbard authored that report. This one, we went, it's too early to really look at this data, these data yet. But typically, we would see numbers around 80% here, and she, you'll see, there was a little bit of a narrative about being awful, but in general, we're in the neighborhood, we're getting closer. We have some work to still do with our buildings and we invested some time with our buildings, with our principals at the end of last school year to really reinforce our expectations with PBIS. And we'll continue to do that throughout the course of the next year, where we do. And so, we're not perfect here, but we're in the ballpark. I mean, these numbers are not like, you know, you know, 100% or they're not like 50%. They're, they're in the neighborhood and we could, we could still obviously improve as well. One upside here is the recognition from the RTI center. And if you recall, I think it was two or three meetings ago, we had the principals come and these were the recognition from the RTI center. And this is really, that bronze level is really looking at full implementation in one content area for a full year. And by content area from the RTI center, that's either behavior, mathematics, or reading. And so you'll see that, and this is based on the submitting their results back from those assessments we talked about earlier. And then the silver one is to do that full implementation for two years and for one year at a selected level, or like a more intervention, or intense intervention level. So, we've got, we are moving in a positive way as a district and hopefully we'll see that happen even more in a greater level next year. So, at this point, do you want me to?
No, let's, let's stay here. We'll start, we'll...
You want to start with PBIS or do you want to?
Yep. Does the board have any questions relative to the annual report on PBIS? I have a couple, if that's okay. I know as far as, you know, very aware of PBIS in the sense of what it's meant to do. I think for the board and for people listening, I'd like you to kind of differentiate between PBIS and the compliance and competence piece and the check-in, check-out, which is there. But when you look at our strategic plan, check-in, check-out is really with a person a kid can identify with or have a relationship with, so that their conversations can be relevant and connect. I mean, that's my understanding. But oftentimes, PBS now can be looked at compliance, you know, these are the rules and this is what you need to do, as opposed to the competence a child needs to problem-solve it through and get to a different place. Can you speak to that a little bit?
I'm gonna, Dr. Zhang.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's very exciting to be able to see you, 'cause typically I'm way down here and the stage is way up here. So, Chris, that's a good question, and I think sometimes PBIS is misunderstood and looked at as a compliance program, and it is not. The premise of PBIS is really looking at buildings creating safe and predictable environments for our students. And so, a lot of times, I think, when we see things like what Jim had shared earlier about the ODRs, it looks like those are referrals that are written, but really, those are referrals that are written for the school more than the student. We look at those referrals and we say, if we have a student that's received, say, six ODRs, what are we as a system doing that's not matching with what that child needs? And then that's where we have to tweak our system versus punishing the child, because it's really a data system, a data point for us, more so than it is for the child at that point. So, again, the whole compliance issue, I think, is a lot of times a misunderstanding with people who don't understand the framework of PBIS, but we're really looking at a positive behavior approach, which starts with the adults in the building and not the students.
So, truly, that really connects to our strategic plan and looking at the whole child. And I just wanted to make that connection, okay? And then I had another question about the pieces when you get to tier two and tier three, where you really have to do a functional behavioral assessment. And I saw some connections, this might connect a little bit to the mental health piece, because we're pulling in outside agencies to deal with mental health. And that used to be a difficult place to do a complicated behavioral, functional behavioral assessment, and what would that look like over time for a child, or how was that interpreted? Where does, where are those connections in PBIS?
So, within PBIS, we actually now do simple FBAs at the universal level as well. We don't necessarily always wait for the child to be in the tier two or tier three process before we do that. It's really looked at as an intervention. So, to intervene, we want to get to the child as early as possible. So, within the PBS framework, we have a number of coaches and a number of teachers that have been trained to do the simple FBAs. I think once upon a time, it was just the special ed staff that did the complex FBAs, and now through the PBS framework, we have a lot of adults in our buildings that are trained to all... trained to also do the simple FBA so that we can go in and do those monitoring, the supervision, gathering, gathering the data so that we can have conversations about the student in order to put interventions in place. So, that is really part of the model or the framework as well.
Excellent. Anybody else? Commissioner Torres?
One question about the ODRs chart. I was surprised to see the number of ODRs at the PK level higher than the high school Is there any, does the system allow us to sort of map where those ODRs are coming from, not where they are addressed to? So that teachers can be helped more to implement the PBIS?
So, within the SWISS collection system, we do know where ODRs are coming from. So, for example, at the elementary level, we see a lot of ODRs from the playground during recess time. So, lots of ODRs around that 11:30 to 12:30 time because students are outside, it's a little bit more unstructured time. And so, we do see a lot more ODRs coming from that area. And that what tells us, what that tells us as a school then is that we need to have a different structure or different types of supervision out on our playgrounds. And so, we do know where the ODRs are coming from, as well as from who, the adult is that's writing out that ODR.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Luganville?
I, I was going to ask about, I know you're talking here about some concerns still with buy-in, but it looks like, and I've heard that before, but it looks like there's a real plan moving forward with that. I just wanted to point out something, which I think is really important. And that's where you put in this report, this official report, about the disproportionate representation of non-white students in special education. That's been something that, in this district, it wasn't always owned. And this is something that is very clear that there's some leadership on this, willing to take it on and willing to call it what it is and address it. And I just want to say, I know many of us have talked about that and expressed this concern. And so, to see that in a report is huge and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think that's, seeing none, we'll go on to the next. Pull up, Kai, should we do mental health?
Sure. I'm still standing here.
Any, any board members have questions on the mental health report? Commissioner Luganville?
I just had one question. I know you, you talked to Jim about the fiscal end of things with mental health and expanding. And I'm just curious if we have been approached or have pursued representation with the county's Mental Health Committee, the new effort? Because I know they're focusing on prevention and early stuff and they just got that million-dollar grant. So, just wondering if we're, if we have a seat at that table.
Actually, I'm a coalition member on, with that group and so, I am there. And the, the funds look like it's a lot of money. However, it's really money that's going to be used to really look at systems projects throughout the county. I mean, that's Eau Claire County as well as Chippewa County. And so, the school is, it's a part, we're a part of it, but a very small part of it because they're looking at all of the other factors that service our communities. And I think they're going to do some good work and be able to put that together. We're, as a district, again, as we talked about supportive learning environments, we'll be reaching out to that group for some of the work that needs to be done in the district because they'll be able to bring in the expertise that we don't have here. So, we will be working with that group very closely.
I had a question about non-publics. I looked at the people that were involved in that grant. Are, are our non-public schools at the table as well?
You know what? I don't think there is a member on that coalition that's from the non-publics.
Are we responsible then for providing any of this service to our non-publics?
That's a good question. I don't know. Yeah. Not a word.
I won't put it out there then. Okay. Okay. Thanks. I, I had another question if I can ask, is that okay with the board? In reference to the preschool piece that Dr. Torres brought up, Commissioner Torres brought up, I noticed too on the, the year, year-end comparisons, that if you look at kindergarten, you know, and the percentage between 14, 15 to 15, 16, you know, I kind of just did a plus and minus analysis, that kindergarten is up three percentage points. And I know statewide information or data has shown that there's an increase of ODRs and concerns in kindergarten due to maybe that it might not be as developmentally appropriate as it should be, as far as learning through play and having certain expectations in kindergarten. So, I was wondering if the district had looked at that.
We typically look at our data at the end of every year to kind of say, where are we at and what do we need to be doing differently? And so, Jody Hubbard, Michelle Johnson, and myself have sat down and looked at that data. All of the things that you mentioned about the appropriateness of our curriculum to just the length of day from going from a 4K program to really a full-day program and the academic expectations that we have are all things that we've had conversations about.
I'm glad the conversations are there because that was a concern too, brought up by kindergarten. So, Superintendent Hardabag?
So, there is some new work going on and I think you're aware of this, at Prairie Ridge with conscious discipline, which is very developmentally appropriate. And based on the experiences that they have there, we may be looking at extending that into kindergarten. But I think we need a little bit more experience with the program before we take that move. But it would fit very nicely into the PBIS framework.
Yeah, it does. Thank you for that. Anyone else have a question? I want to make sure I covered all mine in here. Oh, there was something in Phase Three for mental health about McKinley in a confidential space, but that was addressed through the referendum. So, I want to make sure everybody's aware of that, right? I think that's all the questions I have. If no one else does, we can go on to, should we do Prairie Ridge? Anybody have questions about Prairie Ridge? I just put a plus on the front of it and said, "No questions." Thanks, Heidi, for the report. So, well done. Commissioner Luganville?
I don't have much either because this is a shiny example for the state, what we have. But just curious, when you talk about violations of the contract with us for our sites, is that generally an issue where somebody maybe loses having a certified teacher on staff and so then they lose it? Or is, what is it normally that's a violation?
It could be anything that's part of our contract. So, it could be not maintaining a consistent teacher or teacher assistant. It could be not following the systems in, in place and, and like, for example, implementing PBIS or other structures. It could be anything from not teaching the curriculum or, you know, doing the assessment or things that we have specifically written out in our contract. And so, I always refer back to that when I, because I do a lot of site visits, I'm in a lot of different places and, you know, meeting with directors. I meet with teachers and new teachers on a monthly basis. So, it's not without great support in helping them before we do anything, like pull one of our contracts and sites, so.
I had to smile when I looked at this little paragraph in here where you want to disregard the thresholds so you could dig deeper. I figured you'd do that eventually because, you know, it, it takes more work to do that. But they, they used to have a cutoff with their evaluation where they could stop because if a child got to a certain point, they didn't have to go on. And what they're saying in here is they want to go beyond that so that they can bridge that, so I, and have more data about kids over time. So, kudos.
Yeah. And that's what's really fun about having teams look at this data, because as you work with, with data and folks, they evolve as well. And each time we meet as a leadership team, new information comes up. And that was, so if you look at the PALS graph, that's the Phonological Awareness Literacy Screening, you'll see that under lowercase and letter sounds, it's a very high percentage. But that's only the percentage of kids that were able to move on, meeting the thresholds. Okay? So, they had to meet, they had to get 16 letters in order to move on to testing lowercase and they had to get nine lowercase to move on to letter sounds. So, our staff really wants to see, okay, if this child, how many do they know? And that's not saying we're, if they miss the first five, we're going to continue all the way through. But teachers really wanted that information, to have more accurate data to be looking at, so.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thanks, Heidi.
Thank you.
Secclusion, physical restraint. Any questions from the board on that one? I was very pleased to see that we have people on every building now. That, I didn't know that, so that was good. I did notice too, though, the, the percent of total, you know, the males far away females, that's, that's alarming to me, that it would be that stark. And the other one is 20% in kindergarten. You know, again, there's a flag, you know, for whatever it means. So, it's nice to know that conscious discipline will be maybe at kindergarten level. Anyone else have?
I wanted to also point out quickly, is some of the, some of the schools, Northwoods, Putnam, Robbins, Sherman, they're all, they're all cluster sites. They have a higher number of kids with IEPs, correct?
Yes.
So, it was interesting to look at where they sat as well, so. Commissioner Bika?
I, in the same way that you look at duplicated counts for students across schools, I was interested, you look at duplications between seclusions and restraints. How, that's just, I don't know if you, it's not here, I know, but I'd be curious about that. And then I wondered, in so many of the reports, there are benchmarks and I wondered if the district had a benchmark for these issues, like a long-term plan to get them to zero.
So, in response to the last question first, I think our long-term plan really is looking at our PBIS framework and making sure that we're implementing that to fidelity at all three levels. And at this point, we're just really not quite there due to the dynamics of just the changing pieces in the schools. And so, that really is our long-term plan, is to be looking at those pieces much more carefully. And then can you ask your first question again?
Just how many of the instances of seclusion, how many of them, it's duplicated, it's the same child in the physical restraint?
Sure. So, it's not duplicated for you here in your report, but the principals do have that information in their buildings as to which child does get a restraint as well as a seclusion report. At the same time, and the buildings have that level data. I don't have that duplicated here for you, just the individual counts. But some of these numbers are duplicated in terms of who the, who the child is.
No? Seeing none, we can go to the nursing, school nursing services.
My only question on this one was that outlier of 20,408 totals under consultations that in 2016. I went, oh my goodness. But that's kind of an outlier, right? We feel quite no whites like that.
Right. And it just, again, nursing services, like a lot of other services, it just depends from year to year what the needs are and if we go up or go down, or the number of consultations that take place.
Or new staff.
Or new staff, yep. And how many trainings have to happen, move-in students, those kinds of factors.
Anyone have a question? Commissioner Luganville?
Do you have a, an idea, moving into this school year, maybe you'll be keeping your eye on some things to see if, in this next budget process, there, there would be or wouldn't be a request for additional FTE with this? Because I know it's been an ongoing, you know, you talk about, it's, you know, they're pretty, stretched pretty thin, so.
Yep. And we have lots of, lots of groups, I think, in our district that are stretched pretty thin that way. And nurses are just one of those examples. As Jim had pointed out earlier, our needs continue to go up, but we maintain the same number of FTEs, again, due to our budget constraints, so. Always looking out.
Anyone else? Anyone from our audience? Seeing none, we can head to our request for future agenda items. Thank you, everyone, for those reports. I really appreciate it, all your hard work. Commissioner Luganville?
I don't have one, but I just want to remind people what I said in the legislative report. If they have any topics they'd like to have brought to the state convention as a resolution, to send those to me or Chris before the next board meeting so we can talk about, if we can make that a resolution and pass it as a board.
My, my only suggestion on that one, having this conversation, would be how alarmed we are about the referendum piece. So, that might be one we could think about, okay? I have one also. I just don't know if there'd be a board report or just a quick update on where we are with health insurance conversations in the budget. Because I know that's going to come up pretty fast with bidding that out and our concerns about what is going to happen there. So, even if there's nothing, I think I, I just would feel better knowing that. So, I just put that one in here, okay? Anyone else? Okay. I take a motion then for adjournment.
So, move.
Second.
Commissioner Vu, Commissioner Luganville for a second, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Be all right.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.